Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's some.
Right. Welcome back, Chair Harington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. So we have a full agenda for this afternoon. The first item is our government relations update and setup for the 2023 legislative agenda or yeah, agenda discussion. Welcome, team.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Erin Doyle, your Senior Government Relations Manager, and I am pleased to be here with your entire county government relations team and our partners at Clean Water Services as we begin our conversations with you to plan for the 2023 legislative session at the state and federal level. As you know, there are still a lot of unknowns about 2023 and what the political landscape and leadership is going to look like while we wait for the election cycle to be run smoothly and competently through Washington County's elections. However, that uncertainty does not change the need for the county to establish our own goals and expectations of the legislative session. So this presentation represents the government relations team continuing to evolve in evolve our approach and processes to ensure the county's active participation in how the state and federal governments see us as vital partners in finding solutions for some broad policy question. To accomplish that, for how the remotes work, just a quick overview of how we're going to approach that today. First, we're going to have Clean Water Services present on their federal principles and priorities, as well as their state priorities that they have internally identified to bring to your board for your consideration as we go through the process of drafting our state and federal agendas. And then the Washington County, we'll do a line change with the Washington County TR team coming up. And we're going to go through a little bit more detail on some other areas, but first we'll remind you who we are, since we are somewhat new to the presentation sphere, but the team has been working together for over a month now to get organized. And then we'll talk about the process for developing the agenda, what our session preparations are, and go over some of the portfolio-based topics that the legislature has brought forward, including some pretty meaty conversations around some broad topics that we're not looking for a statement of priority, but looking for the beginning of the guidance and the beginning of the conversation on. And then we'll remind you of what the state legislative calendar and the remainder of TR's timeline looks like. So with that, and if there are no questions there, I will turn it over to Tracy to go ahead for Clean Water Services.
Thank you and good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Board of Clean Water Services. I am Tracy Rainey, Senior Policy Analyst for Clean Water Services. I am pleased to have the opportunity to update the board today on the work that we've been doing at Clean Water Services to gather input and begin to formulate our draft 2023 federal and state legislative agendas. I know you have a lot of information to cover today, or so I've heard. So I will be brief, but I am more than willing to answer any questions that you have or to receive any additional feedback that you may have to share today or in the coming months ahead, if that is more appropriate with the time we have today. So our first slide, I'm going to cover our proposed draft federal principles for 2023. Most of these principles may be familiar to the board, as the majority of them were carried over from last year's agenda. Over the past few months, we've solicited again input from staff representing a variety of departments within Clean Water Services. And as a result of those conversations, we did modify some of the language from last year's principles, including broadening language regarding ongoing support for federal water-related infrastructure investments. We also created a separate standalone principle specific to recycled water, which had been previously incorporated into some of those broader infrastructure principles. The final bullet on this slide is new, and again, is the result of our internal discussions and the feedback that we received from our team. As a utility provider, we continue to face new and growing challenges that require science and data to inform both policy and operational decisions. In addition, ongoing impacts from climate change drought and emerging pollutants will require us to identify and invest in certain mitigation strategies and innovative solutions. At the same time, we recognize the potential cost impact that these efforts can have on our rate pairs. So this final principle is intended to broadly capture the need for federal investments and strategies to better understand and respond to these impacts and the need to help mitigate the cost impacts that may be associated with addressing these various challenges. So Chair, would you prefer that I move on or pause now for any questions or feedbacks?
I think that, given that there is a lot here, that we should give you the opportunity to present your three CWS slides and then open the floor.
That sounds great. Thank you. Next slide, please. Okay, moving on to our draft federal priorities, which are intended to reflect more specific actions and work that we will look to engage in during 2023. The first is to continue to work with the Bureau of Reclamation and our federal delegation to advance necessary seismic modifications for Skoggins Dam. We've been working to ensure that this project continues to be a priority for the federal government, and we will continue to do that work to ensure that construction commences and is completed as timely as possible. The next priority is to continue to advocate for resources that will help local governments invest in and further advance recycled water project opportunities. As the board is aware, we will need to expand our recycled water program considerably in the coming years. Recycled water represents both a critical tool to mitigate future temperature impacts for the river, and it can also serve as an important drought mitigation tool as well. The next bullet is reflective of the continued need to invest in our nation's water infrastructure. While we did see an unprecedented level of funding from the bipartisan infrastructure law that passed last year, there will still be a significant unmet need to address the nation's aging water infrastructure going forward. We will also continue to advocate for additional funding to support low-income household water assistance. Federal funding for household water rate assistance was initially allocated to the states in 2021, and at that time, Oregon received 13.8 million, which was further allocated and then distributed through the state's various community action agencies. That funding is anticipated to be fully spent down by the end of this year or early next year. I know Washington County saw spend down of those funds by May, I believe, of this year. A lot of resource went into standing up this new program, and the program proved to be very successful and very much needed to help lower-income Oregonians and those on fixed incomes. The final three items were included on last year's agenda and reflect the need for ongoing programmatic funding. As it relates, though, to integrated planning, we will be advocating for funding to help states and local governments implement integrated planning approaches for water quality permits. Next slide, please. Okay, I'll now move into our draft state legislative priorities relating to infrastructure. So in addition to advocating for the federal funding for water infrastructure, we are looking to continue to advocate for ongoing and hopefully expanded investment in water-related infrastructure programs. Again, the need and potential costs for rate pairs in terms of addressing water infrastructure needs is simply too great for rate pairs to take on and for local governments to navigate. The state does have some unique and effective funding resources that are more specifically tailored to meet some of the specific water infrastructure needs that many Oregon communities are facing. The next bullet that you will see is probably not the most glamorous one, but it may be one of the most important priorities for us, and that is to ensure sufficient funding and service levels for the Department of Environmental Quality's Water Quality Permitting Program. We need to ensure that water quality permits continue to be renewed in a timely fashion, that they are implementable, and that they are supportive of some of the innovative strategies that we know we'll need to embark upon to address the water quality challenges that we face today. Water quality permits are critical for the protection of the environment and public health, but they're also absolutely critical to support economic development. On industrial infrastructure readiness, we are looking to engage in conversations around infrastructure readiness is really critical. The infrastructure is available to support industrial growth and that the planning work is being done to be able to be as ready and responsive as possible. We will be looking for opportunities to carry that message forward in the context of the various conversations that are ongoing as related to potential economic development opportunities for Oregon and this region. As it relates to the next bullet, and to try and really hurry along, we will continue to work proactively in close partnership with the Association of Clean Water Agencies, the Oregon Health Authority, and the Department of Environmental Quality to sample and better understand the prevalence of PFOS, specifically as it relates to Oregon. We continue to be encouraged by the data we've seen across the state, but we will continue to advocate for expanded research opportunities to support this important work. On reuse, this is very similar to the advocacy work that we plan to do at the federal level. We've identified the need for ongoing resources, and in addition, we've also identified the need to provide the Department of Environmental Quality with staff capacity that's necessary to update their rules and guidance around recycled water. The second-to-last bullet is one that we had on our agenda from last year, and that is to work to preserve local infrastructure financing tools, those tools that are critical to help us pay for the necessary infrastructure that our communities need. That would include system development charges. And then finally, the last priority is similar to the federal priority that was noted earlier. We will be working to seek state-supported opportunities to enhance responsiveness and resiliency. This will include work to identify opportunities and resources to help local governments respond to ongoing and emerging challenges, including natural disasters, impacts from climate change and drought, emerging pollutants, and population growth. We know there's going to be numerous conversations around these types of proposals, and where it's appropriate, we will work to remind the legislature of the specific ways these challenges impact water-related utilities. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions or to provide any opportunities for future follow-up, if that is appropriate in the months ahead.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? Go ahead.
Yeah, Diane touched on this morning, the waters of the U.S. legislature, I guess, decisions. I don't know, how much, how much impact do those decisions have on Clean Water Services and what we do?
Yeah, so there's federal legislation regarding EPA's authorities, right, to manage waters of the United States. So, yeah, well, so this is the debate. So EPA extended their authority to include wetlands and ditches and other things that were connected potentially to navigable waters, but they've also been applying rules when they're not connected to navigable waters. And that's the debate that's going on right now. For Clean Water Services, the wetlands are an important part of our reuse program. You saw around Cook Park, we're wanting to provide more water than the plants need. We want to actually provide more hydrology to those wetlands. And currently, under the rules, it's treated like it's a point source discharge that has to currently meet a very restrictive rule. So we're looking for more flexibility because it isn't the Twolleton River, right? So there's both challenges and both opportunities with what's going on in the current debate of the waters of the U.S.
Yeah, the, my connectivity to that was I was on the Water Council when I was in the Mayor's US Conference of Mayors.
My apologies.
And, and yeah, you know, including ditches, I know that the city of Hillsborough had issues with developing out there by Topgolf because there was a proposed ditch there somewhere. So anyway, I was just wondering about how much impact all of that has on the services that you guys do. So it was interesting to me, you, under your federal priorities, you said additional funding to support low-income household water assistance as a federal priority. That seemed like something that would normally come out of the state. So this is a federal deal? That's where we get those, that money?
That is a great question, Commissioner, and I will say that I think when we do a revisit of this, you'll probably see it landing on the state as well, based off of some of the conversations we're having. The initial program that was implemented in 2021 was from federal funding. We are really close in the 2021 session to, and that was when I was at Lake of Oregon City, but to passing a bill that would provide state funding for that. And the state made a decision to see how that federal funding came through, different requirements for different funds. So now that we have, I think, demonstrated a case and that we can use that level of funding and pretty quickly, I think we probably have a great pathway at the state to ask for additional supplemental fundings. I think that's a great, great remark.
Okay. And then who provides, again, under state priorities, you say infrastructure readiness, I think, is the term that you used in here. Maybe that was.
Third bullet, promoting industrial infrastructure readiness.
Yeah, so we've talked, again, in our meetings with Mark and Diane and the rest of the team, we've talked a lot about being able to be visionary about replacing some of the things that we need, enhancing some of our filtration plants, all those kinds of things. I always thought that kind of came out of our own pocket. So where, what state, where would you get that money from the state? And I guess, is it even available?
Another really good question, Commissioner. I don't know that this one is necessarily a seeking state funding for the infrastructure, but again, I think in recognition that there are a lot of conversations about how it is that we can attract, retain these key industries in Oregon. And sometimes we see infrastructure as part of that conversation, but I think more often than not, it is not given that priority level, and the planning of that is really, really critical to make sure that we're ready, that we can actually provide and have that capacity to serve those needs. So I think this is really just our way of saying, there's going to be a lot of conversations. We're going to be ready for opportunities to make sure that the legislature, the state doesn't forget the importance of the infrastructure that's necessary to support.
That's a great point, because again, we talk about enhancing our existing businesses, increasing employment, and of course, recruiting new businesses. We don't look down the line and say, I wonder, I wonder if we've got the infrastructure to, for water systems and, and those kinds of things to do that. So I doubt the state looks that far down the road, but we're just happy if they're supportive of economic development. But anyway, yeah, so good point. So that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
I as well. That, it's always nice to look at, you know, what our aspirations are in terms of what kinds of things we're going to be involved in. But what's your process? Because today is just about what generally we're looking at. What will be your process to communicate not only legislation that is coming at us, but things that we might aspire to address by having us initiate some legislation? So I always look at, Erin does a good job on her side. That's the county side. You're a different organization, different animal. How are you going to bring that information as a co-chairing next year?
Thank you, Director Rogers. That's a good question, and that's why I'm very fortunate to have Tracy working with me in a lot of ways, particularly on the state basis. We are trying to meet with every member of both the House and the Senate to get them to a water resource recovery facility to get this, so they're familiar with what we do. And at that same time, we're going through these items to demonstrate what our priorities are. We have a good, we do regular briefings with the federal delegation staff, and once the board adopts these in December, we will be sharing this list either one-on-one or as in a group setting to communicate what's important to us. Most of these things are not going to come out as a big surprise. Some of the new emerging things related to PFOS and things like that may be newer, though.
I can add, Commissioner, and I think Erin and I have had a lot of ongoing conversations about how we can effectively coordinate to make sure that there is ongoing communication through that process and to understand where the county is going to take the lead on an issue, especially if it's more of a defensive reactionary role that we're playing and where we're going to take that lead. And so I think a lot of that coordination is going to come with Erin and I throughout the session, because as you know, as we all know, things happen very quickly, evolve very quickly. But we want to make sure, of course, that we're doing good communication and feedback loop with, with the board as well. So any feedback you have about the most effective way to do that, I think we're all ears.
You answered it well. I just wanted to know how, how it would go beyond this. The one item that you don't have up in there that I would like to share is one that she has on her side of the agenda, and that's called gain share. When we initially did all of our negotiations, it was, as you know, with Intel, we agreed, and there was a lot of damage in that negotiation. It was very difficult to do it, but they would pay 100% of their buildings and land, and then all of what they would give us on the personal property side. We all know all that. There's been a bit of pushback on whether we should be getting gain share. Because that gain share is important, I think, to the infrastructure, to Jerry's point. When you've got to think about what we're doing and we're putting in these facilities, it's not just roads, it's bridges. It's also water, domestic water, as well as sewer water. So I would hope that maybe you could be an advocate, because there should be some provision for us to get resources. If we're going to give up all the tax revenue, but expected to put in the infrastructure, that's a very big, big ask. And so it's not on your side. I only put a thought in your mind that I think that there should be some thought about that.
Thank you, Commissioner, and we'll certainly take that feedback back to our team as we kind of continue these discussions.
Any other Commissioner questions or comments?
Yeah, I'll make a comment, and I do actually have a question for you, Diane and Mark. But great presentation. You have your work cut out. Good luck at the state and federal level, and I hope we have great wins and all the bullets that you've listed. And let us know as elected if we can help in any of these conversations. You'll probably have to provide a lot of talking points and context behind everyone, every bullet point. My question to you, Mark and Diane, is I, a couple of months ago, I think it was a couple of months ago, I attended the semiconductor manufacturing tour that Intel did. And this is, I'm looping back to conversation we had about Intel and their plans, and I'm wondering if there is an opportunity now, since semiconductor manufacturing is going to be at the state level, if there's any, we figure out how to loop some money to in Water Services and potential partnership with Intel. So I just thought I would ask, since we're talking about state lobbying and whatnot and funding.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. I'm promoting industrial infrastructure readiness. It is part of that in a lot of ways. I think what we have done, particularly under the leadership of Joe Gahl, our Chief Relations Officer, is we've stepped much more proactively into that conversation. So we're working very closely with the cities of Beaverton and with Hillsborough. In fact, last week, we were invited to be part of a tour of the North Hillsborough area and kind of industrial readiness on that side. And the way that we are being positioned in that discussion is, there's an article, and you can get this week's paper on it, Northwest Natural PGE Clean Water Services. These are utilities that are central to industrial growth in that area. These are how their investments are trying to be aligned with how to move forward on that. So that's a part of it. We don't want to get lost. I think often with the industrial readiness conversation, it's about, is there a land use issue? And, you know, it's, well, often it's land use and workforce. We have a bunch of assets that are buried that I think gets lost a little bit. So trying to elevate that is important, and then hopefully put ourselves in a position where we can either leverage our investments there or if there's ways that we can get funding to help support some of that. A big new wet industry coming to this region is going to require changes in, you know, changes at the treatment plant, additional investments in the collection system. Those are typically paid by system development charges by those new employees, but we've got to figure out how we sit there. Anything else you want to add there, Diane?
No, I think we're, did a really good coverage of it, because the other piece of it, there's a time for response. By the time we know that an industry is coming, we want to make sure the land we have for the locations of the infrastructure is defined. So it's really about delivering the pipelines and also the expansion at the plant. But there's time to serve, right? A major expansion at the treatment plant can take anywhere from two to four years, depending on what it is. To put a pump station in the ground, it's about two years. So we want to make sure that we, we plan ahead enough so that we can take actions in a timely manner that meets the development need of the industry. But we like to be very proactive and to be able to work with industries ahead of time. Yeah.
I would just, any other comments? I would just add that really the bedrock values that these principles and priorities are based on is the accessibility of clean water, clean air, and livable communities. So in order to have a livable community, we need to have a thriving economy. So we need to make sure we're playing a role, all of us, not just our great GR folks, in telling the story that Washington County already is a worldwide provider for the semiconductor industry. It's not all based here in Hillsborough, right? Look at what's going on all the way down Sherwood. But we also have a thriving athletic recreational travel tourism sector that relies upon the very same bedrock values and capabilities. And the work of Clean Water Services and the work of Washington County continues to be providing for that. So as things continue to develop on the national stage and the state stage, I know as one of five, I'm going to be interested in our exercising our political voices, and that may even be sending letters to our federal delegation. You know, as Mr. Carr mentioned, the Supreme Court is looking at their docket for the next season and may undermine the basic elements of the EPA. Well, we can all kiss our future goodbye if we don't have some consistency in some of this important authority, and it's incumbent upon us to tell that story. And if the Supreme Court chooses to make decisions that unravel that, then we're going to be that much more dependent upon congressional response and helping to tell that story nationwide about the need for it, so beyond our own state. So we have our work cut out for us. We live in interesting times. Thank you very much for helping us do this work in partnership with.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. We're now going to do the line change, and I'm going to call the rest of the Washington County team up. I will also say that we do also assist Clean Water Services as they take their approach at the state level, and we'll continue that ongoing partnership and relationship. So this is your not-new, new government relations team. I'm really pleased to be the new Senior Government Relations Manager and have these two fine individuals working with me in representing Washington County. So just very briefly, I'm going to have Zakir and then Tom introduce themselves.
Good afternoon, Chair Harrington and members of the Commission. My name is Zakir Khan. I use he/him/his pronouns. I'm a Government Relations Manager here. Washington County is also home. So this is a really special position that I'm really excited to be able to serve within. And in my previous role, I was resident of Genal Bynum's Chief of Staff. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. For the record, my name's Tom Powers. I'm very pleased to be joining this team and to work with you all. And previous to this role, I worked in the State Senate for the Senate Majority Office for about 10 years and recently was the, most recently was the Caucus Administrator. Very pleased to be here with you all today. Thanks.
Thank you. So the first thing we're going to go over is where, how we process adopting an agenda and where we are right now. I want you to know, it's a very long process, and we are very close to the beginning. That's what that star is there for. Right now, we're providing this presentation to you where we are talking through a number of things, but it's the beginning of the conversation to really officially draft two agendas. As a reminder, and as reflected in the packet, we do two agendas for it's combined county and Clean Water Services, a federal agenda and a state agenda. The federal agenda for the county is usually statements of our priorities in a principled format, as opposed to a very explicit list of we would like X thing to happen to give our federal lobby team the flexibility to react to the federal process. The state agenda consists of statements of general principles, things that are the basis from which the board has given us direction across whatever department. One of those is clearly no unfunded mandates. I don't know how many times I've heard that in the last two months, but it is one of our founding principles that we work on across the board. And then there's a set of priorities, which are very specific asks that are changed from year to year. And then there are principles by which each of the departments and divisions approach their work. Those are the Those are the three components of the state legislative agenda that we are going to be focused on updating for 2023. Today, we are primarily focusing on the state-level priorities conversation as a starting point for drafting, which we'll do over the next month and then bring back for your consideration in November. Further conversation, further redrafting based on your directions, other legislative issues that may have come up. In the meantime, unfortunately, we are meeting with you on Election Day. So we won't be able to answer those original questions that I noted at the beginning. But by the time we come back to you in the beginning of December, we will have more clarity and a hopefully finalized version of the agenda for then you to adopt a week later. So that's overall where we are, and then January comes along a lot quicker. From there, I'm going to turn it over to the team to talk about how we've gotten to where we are today.
So the GR team met with commissioners to learn about what they saw as their priorities. And one of the things that I just want to point out is that there was deep alignment between what the commissioners were communicating, what the departments were communicating, and also what legislators during legislative days and other conversations that I've had with them were also communicating. So there's a real pathway here to connect on a lot of different issues. And so the first thing that I wanted to mention here is that commissioners truly wanted to see our county's residents, as Chair Harrington mentioned, thrive, and wanted the tools necessary for them to feel supported, whether it was through a county service or a provider that we contract with. This will be a theme that you'll see running throughout the Behavioral Health System and the Health System in a couple of slides from now. But critically, we are facing major workforce shortages, and the inability to recruit and retain workers is becoming a consistent theme that needs to be dealt with. A second critical issue that commissioners pointed to is that they wanted to be a partner in the state's ambitions through the legislature, sharing influence and resources in order to make those intense a reality. So that speaks to the point about unfunded mandates. There is this vision that's being set up, but there's not proper influence and resources being provided to execute on a particular mission. Third, commissioners wanted to protect both our national resources and tax incentives to avail the county of future economic development opportunities. You all spent a little bit of time in the previous group discussing that issue. And finally, affordable housing is impacting the most marginalized, the everyday worker. Commissioners empathize with the struggles of our community members and wanted to support policies that increase the housing supply. One of the issues that you'll hear that comes up in the healthcare space is that some students can't simply attend college programs to go into these fields like counseling, like psychology, because they can't afford the housing even when they have full rights. And so that's deeply an issue that impacts our workforce's ability to be able to help Washington County residents thrive. And with that, I'll turn it over to Tom.
Thank you. So as my colleague said, we met with the commissioners and also departments, and there were similar themes that emerged from both conversations. So from departments, as we met, we were hearing a lot of the same things. So sustainable resources for providing shared and mandated services from the state, or whether they're shared with the state or mandated by the state, there was a common theme and pattern of wanting to have more resource in those shared services. So for example, Community Corrections is responsible for supervising justice-involved individuals. The cost of doing that has increased while the funding level from the state has remained stagnant over time. And so another challenge that was just addressed, but was also brought forward in our conversations with departments, was workforce challenges and recruitment and retention. And in our conversation with the Department of Health and Human Services, the Developmental Disabilities Division, let us know that they had a challenge around caseworker shortage and not just hiring, but retaining their workforce. And this was just one of many different workforce challenges that was cited. Human Resources also backed this up, saying we face a challenge in retaining the workforce here in Washington County, because these are systemic issues throughout our economy. And finally, influence over the state requirements for implementing services that are, again, shared with the state or mandated by the state. So more influence as these decisions are made, as rulemaking is done at the state level. For example, Department of Land Use and Transportation brought forward concern about the state's implementation of the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Program and how the county, you know, ideally would have more influence in that process. And so now I'll hand it back to Erin.
So those were the high-level themes, but we are not the only players in this conversation, unfortunately. We did also hear from the legislature in a number of different ways, through direct conversation, but also legislative days to talk about what their goals are, to the extent that they have them set yet. So the first thing we're going to do here is talk about some of the smaller, general topics that we heard during legislative days that have impact on county work. And then we're going to identify some bigger topics in which the Government Relations Team is working across departments and using that one Washington County philosophy to approach to understand what those legislative efforts are. And we are looking to the board for some general guidance and the initial part of this conversation as we continue to participate and influence what the legislative outcomes may look like. And then we'll finally seek your direction about how to start the process of drafting our state priorities for the legislative agenda for 2023. With that, within my portfolio, just things that aren't going to be discussed until later aren't on this slide. But there are some three major topics that we've heard from our legislative partners. The first and most obvious with the price tag is the regional transportation ongoing conversation, but the interstate bridge replacement project and funding that is going to be first and foremost in the transportation space. What we are trying to ensure is when they open that up and have those statutes up, they open up the tolling statutes, and we need to continue to protect our ability to actually ensure that the regional system is improved and we don't lose all of our funding to a bridge replacement project. Second, in the economic development space and places where Business Oregon needs to see some additional guidance from the state legislature is in the broadband space, as they are continuing to grow their capacity to spend the federal investment that has come down. We're going to see more direction from the legislature on where they should focus and invest those broadband dollars. And then finally, there is an obvious and continuing conversation around homelessness at the state level and their recognition of a continuing need across the spectrum for folks moving them from on the street to into permanent, stable housing. With that, I'll turn it over back to Tom.
Erin, can I ask you a quick question? Chair, is it, you want me to wait till the end? It's a specific question to the homeless thing.
How would you like to manage the remainder of our 90 minutes?
If it's a very specific question that needed a little bit more, I think that if I can answer it quickly.
Well, it's about to the homelessness topic. We have the SHS money, but this is just our three counties. So would this be more directed at a statewide? I mean, if the state was asking this question, would it be a statewide issue that they're talking about? Not necessarily funds directed to us, because presumably lots of money.
Correct. It is a statewide question, and we need to be at the table because while our local resources are important, the more resources we can bring to bear across the state, the better off we all are.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Erin. So I'm going to cover a few topics from my portfolio area. So during the legislative committees in late September, we heard from the Judiciary Committee the presentation about the Oregon Public Defense Services issue. There's currently a three-branch work group focusing on analyzing the problem around public defense and indigent defense here in the state and looking at solutions for the 2023 legislative session. This is a big problem across the state. It's also particularly felt in counties such as Washington County, where there are a couple hundred defendants that currently lack any counsel. And so this impacts many different departments, including the Circuit Court, the DA's office, the Sheriff's Office, Community Corrections, because the system cannot proceed without those public attorney, public defense attorneys being in place. As you heard earlier this morning, as your board was informed by the county administrator, the Judicial Department has put forward a couple legislative requests regarding increased resources potentially for the 2023 legislative session. So Washington County has been included in judicial, Judicial Department legislative proposal for two additional judicial positions. Additionally, there's been a policy option package put forward by the department that would include Washington County on the list of resources for planning courthouse replacements. We also heard a presentation in the House, I'm sorry, the Senate Judiciary Committee with regard to the Justice Reinvestment Equity Program. And this is implement, an implemented part of a bill from earlier this year around work to reduce recidivism and disparities in the justice system, making sure that we are furthering the goals of equity and safety statewide and here in Washington County as well. And finally, changing gears to public records, there's a state entity called the Public Records Advisory Committee. And this is a group of folks from across the state working together on different public records issues. They are looking at putting forward a bill in the next session around the limitation of fees and costs that public bodies can charge to records requesters. So we'll be looking at what they actually submit into the 2023 legislative session, as they're still working on that right now. And we'll continue to monitor how any public records legislation may impact the county's budget and service delivery. And I'll turn it over to Zakir.
Can I, Tom, can I ask you a quick question? I thought I heard this morning, Tanya, that we had been awarded those two additional judicial positions. Oh, so I misunderstood that. So we're going to be requesting that.
I will provide that update to the board in writing.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I misunderstood that. Go ahead.
Thank you, Tom. Here are some of the areas in which are in my, are in my portfolio. Again, in the Health and Human Services space, both the Behavioral Health Committee as well as the Healthcare Committee talked about the challenges of recruitment, retention, and building Oregon's workforce. This is a theme that we're seeing continue down and trickle down to our providers as well here at Washington County and who we contract with. They are having trouble filling positions so they can provide county services. Everyone from nurses to hospitals to counselors are struggling within this space. And the outcomes of the lack of a workforce impact the state's ability to administer services. On the House revenue side, they heard from Business Oregon about our favorite topic of the day, it's just tax incentives. And legislators were able to receive anecdotal data about how one community had been positively impacted through the tax incentive programs. But legislators also expressed concern that the report only covered direct impacts to revenue and that they wanted to hear more about how communities were impacted. To that end, Washington County is working on an analysis that will exactly meet what the legislators are looking for with Eco Northwest that will help to answer those questions, but also to fill that narrative and that story gap that I know so many of you have talked about. And I know that many of these programs will be discussed in a future hearing here before you. And Erin Doyle also has more information, should you need any information in that realm about that contract. In addition to this, it was really critical in the emergency management space to build a culture of safety. And so in the Joint Committee on Information Management and Technology, presenters discussed how through proactive investments, the state was financing a wildfire surveillance system. The presenters discussed how a similar system had been utilized in California, which helped build awareness about fire culture in local communities, would then scan the cameras on a weekly or daily basis to look out for each other, and built a true community structure. And so what that created was that it lessened the burden on local public safety entities when they had to get information out when responding to crises. Finally, a prevailing theme from both our county staff and the legislature has been a concern for election workers' safety due to both threats and doxing. Also, because of an influx of voluminous records requests, election worker efficiency has also been a rising issue. And so I wanted to note, on a county level, our county staff are working diligently on security planning to ensure that our election integrity continues on. And with that, I'll transition back here.
So this is where we expect to spend the bulk of our time in our conversation today, is in the next two topics we're going to cover. But this slide represents four major policy areas that cannot be simplified into a simple policy statement, but instead represent complicated policy conversation where the Government Relations Team and other departments want to work with the knowledge and guidance of the board. Our goal for today is to introduce these legislative conversations to you and to start to receive your guidance on how the county continues to work on these large-scale issues. This is not the only time we'll be having these conversations with you. It is, these issues are pervasive. And one other important thing that we are wanting to do is identify your information needs on these topics as we move forward so that we can continue this conversation. So today, we're only going to talk about the top two on this list of four. They're not ranked in any manner, just the way I wrote them out. But Measure 110 Reform and Housing are two big, complicated, cross-departmental issues. Aid and Assist will come back in a future conversation after you receive a briefing from subject matter experts here in the county on October 18th at a work session. And we also plan to bring back the Industrial Lands and Economic Development slash Semiconductor Task Force conversation after we provide that background information to you and then have a conversation about what is happening with the legislature. So we note those last two issues also require your guidance and direction, but we are planning, we have to get through some background information before we want to ask you those policy questions. So to start with, we'll turn to Measure 110.
Much like the county's website, which got updated, Measure 110 has been getting updated repeatedly the past two weeks. So what we've done is we've updated our slides so that you have the most up-to-date information. But to begin with, I wanted to pose some policy questions to ponder as I walk you through some background information and some additional questions. So first, to meet the intention of the voters on Measure 110, does the board believe that continuing to use a health-based approach is the right force of action? Second, where does the board want to see increased investments to incentivize people seeking treatment? Third, what outcomes would the board like to see in the Measure 110 space? And fourth, what more information does the board need to help develop guidance around these policy conversations? Next slide, please. So in the Measure 110 Reform space and in continuing conversations, there are key policy questions at issue and key tensions also at issue. There is a question of, do we continue to utilize the health-based approach that has been implemented into the law? Or do we go back to the days of premature Measure 110? Do we exercise patience? How much patience do we exercise versus how much urgency should we act with regards to a new program? And what sort of urgency do we utilize in creating further incentives and to innovate on top of the law already? And then finally, underfunding versus full funding. The Behavioral Health System was underfunded in Oregon for several years. What does full funding look like? What does full funding look like for the county in particular? And you'll see that how that becomes relevant in the next slide.
Is there some place, Zakir, that we could get, I could get kind of an executive summary of exactly what Measure 110 does? Because I don't think I understand the breadth of this.
You're in luck, Commissioner. I've got it for you right here.
Okay.
So starting at the top, according to the Oregon Health Authority website, in November 2020, Oregon voters passed by referendum Measure 110, or the Drug Addiction Treatment and Recovery Act. The purpose of Measure 110 is to make screening health assessment, treatment, and recovery services for drug addiction available to all those who need and want access to those services and to adopt a health approach to drug addiction by removing criminal penalties for low-level drug possession. Again, still quoting from the Oregon Health Authority website, "When they passed the ballot measure, the people of Oregon recognized drug addiction and overdoses are a serious problem in Oregon and that Oregon needs to expand access to drug treatment. A health-based approach to addiction and overdose is more effective, humane, and cost-effective than criminal punishments. Making people criminals because they suffer from addiction is expensive, ruins lives, and can make access to treatment and recovery more difficult. Measure 110 requires the formation of a grant program to fund addiction recovery centers and then oversight and accountability council to determine how the grant funds will be distributed. The council will also oversee the implementation of the centers." I'm going to end the quote there and then also add, "The measure also diverted millions of dollars from marijuana taxes to addiction services." Senate Bill 755 from 2021 modified some of the requirements of Measure 110. The bill also provided details required for Measure 110 implementation. Some of the changes include renaming addiction recovery centers to behavioral health resource networks. Commonly used, the vernacular here is burns. Establishing the, and it also established the authority of the Oversight and Accountability Council on behalf of OHA to distribute grants to providers when distributing, and when distributing grants. When distributing grants, the council must also ensure access. To culturally specific and linguistically responsive care for historically underserved populations. In the last week of August, recent polling was created. Through a survey conducted by Data for Progress in which they interviewed or surveyed 1,051 Oregon voters. That survey finds that the law retains strong majority support. Not only do a majority of Oregon voters believe drug use and addiction is a public health issue. And that Measure 110 should remain in place, but voters overwhelmingly support individual provisions of the law. And understand that Measure 110 is not contributing to crime and homelessness in Oregon. Just to dive into the numbers a little bit further, 91% favor peer support mentoring for those struggling with substance use. 90% back supporting individuals in achieving and retaining employment. 86% support funding services to help addiction recovery. 84% support helping individuals obtain and retain safe housing.
I think you just exceeded our ability to absorb that many statistics verbally in one meeting.
I don't have many stats left, so thank you, Chair Harrington. So for this next up, and I just, I really want to thank my behavioral health and public health space colleagues. For being able to provide us with this information. So the Behavioral Health Department worked with the public health divisions. Worked together to have a joint ask of $17 million. They really wanted to emphasize in their applications, one Washington County and also community, not competition. And so what that resulted in was that initially, they asked for 17 million. It came down to $5.1 million. And the Public Health Division also obtained $1.9 million for harm reduction. And so if you're not familiar with harm reduction, here's a definition from the Oregon Health Authority. Harm reduction is a set of practical strategies and ideas aimed at reducing negative consequences associated with substance use. Harm reduction meets people where they are at and supports their agency in preventing overdoses and adopting safer practices. On their terms and with the respect and dignity that they deserve. Next slide, please. All right, I'm going to walk you through legislative days, conversations, and some recent comments that legislators have been making as well as some of the conversations that I've been having with them. So during legislative days, which was in the middle of September-ish, towards the last week of September. 23-ish, during legislative days, the Oregon Health Authority announced they had finalized contracts worth $292.5 million. For services and support for addiction treatment. Funding 170 entities and 240 grant agreements. This is for two years worth of funding. This will pay for other services that aren't Medicaid funded, including outreach, peer mentoring, recovery, housing, and needle exchanges. Also during legislative days and at a conference last week, legislators discussed several items, including. That Measure 110 is a brand new project that will still take some time to stand up. They also recognized that there was an increased need to increase capacity for providers. But that workforce was serving as an inherent barrier towards being able to achieve that. They also recognized that they needed to minimize collateral consequences for those who were simply seeking treatment. And they also had a concern that tickets for drug possession meant to steer people to treatment hadn't been effective. They also articulated that the historic investments that were made in the 2021 session needed to be built upon. That pay parity and reimbursement rates needed to be adjusted in order to support better pay in this space, which would help with retention and recruitment. And caseloads and administrative burdens needed to be eased so that any, so that more direct client contact hours could be achieved. And if that wasn't enough, on Friday of last week. A study produced by the Oregon Health and Sciences University and the Portland State University School of Public Health in collaboration with the Oregon Health Authority. And the Oregon Alcohol and Drug Policy Commission that was released last Friday found that. There is a 49% gap in substance use disorder services needed by Oregonians. Most substance use disorder service providers lack capacity to meet that demand. And that statewide gaps in equity and access include insufficient provision of culturally relevant services to protected classes. Language interpretation and translation services and a workforce that does not represent the demographics of the state. And with that, we will return back to the policy questions.
So here, board, are the questions that we're seeking your guidance on. So as we approach this Measure 110 conversation in the county's role, which you also. Heard about at the AOC District Eight meeting. Will help us make sure that we are focusing and prioritizing where you would like to see resources go. So foundational to that is that continuing on with Measure 110 as adopted by the voters is a health-based approach. And we're just seeking confirmation here that that is the board's wish is to continue that approach. And also asking, based on the knowledge that you've gained from this presentation. And also all of the information received at the AOC District Eight meeting, where you would like to see investment so that we can incentivize more people to seek treatment. At this point in time. So we'll, we'll start there. There is a lot, and we can also answer any questions that you might have. Or promise to get the information back to you.
So Commissioner Rogers. Four of us were in the room for the AOC District Eight meeting. So in addition to the wealth of information shared with us today, we had the opportunity to also hear from. Three different. County. Health experts on the topic of Measure 110 that I really think expanded on. The health-based approach that Aaron has succinctly summarized to those three words. I didn't quite realize the value of it until today and this. This comprehensive wealth of information. So. What are your thoughts?
I don't understand the full implications of costs, and I guess that's maybe what you're attempting to do as well. On any program, whether initiated by the public or initiated by the state. It trickles down to us, obviously has fiscal impact. So I'm hearing what you're saying. I'm hearing, you know, broadly and. I remember 110. My memory is a little fuzzy, but it was a little fuzzy in its parameters like most of them thought. So my only thought is can you give us some indication that maybe that's what Jerry was trying to get at about smart details as to what you think this means? So we have to implement, but what does implementation look like? How much is done? Is that, are there parameters or some sort of metrics? So we have to comply with. I'm hearing no. Just general, we're doing this work.
So, so I'll just, if we could just leave that set of questions there and recognize that we're not going to be able to answer those today. But we.
That's the needs.
Yep, I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure that our GR team didn't try to dive in and answer those because. They aim to please.
Big questions.
So let's do a broad sketch from each commissioner. Who wants to go next?
I do.
Great.
So does, does our CAT. Program. Qualify for Measure 110. Expectations for addiction and triage and all that stuff?
It does, Commissioner. So the money that we applied for is going directly into the CAT. The opportunity there is that the CAT is still in formation and needs to be constructed. But those funds are definitely eligible for, we're getting them through Measure 110.
Okay. And then secondly, on both 20 and 21, you talked about the survey and. Funding and those kinds of things, but nowhere in there did it talk about the funding. Demands that is going to be on the counties to implement these things. So is that anywhere in the conversation about funding counties to do this as well?
So I think that's an opportunity for the board to engage and answer that issue in terms of how much engagement. We want to see, have the county's play. I think that was also a conversation at the District Eight meeting as well. In terms of, you know, what kind of angle does the board want to play? Does the board, returning to the questions. Want to see increased investment to incentivize treatment on a local level? So does that mean asking the legislature for more funding in order to do that? Does it mean innovating within this space? So the law is what it is, but maybe we have better ideas. That can come from our public health colleagues and our behavioral health colleagues. Where they can identify to the board, here are these like legislative priorities that are maybe appearing in. Oregon Health Authority's policy option package that they want to point to is this is something that will help us within this space. So I think the, the kind of. The painting, the canvas is empty in terms of what we can do. The discretion, the decisions to make within that space is of the discussion of the board. And it's, you know, it's obviously on the GR team to execute on that. But I think that, that's still an open-ended question.
And I think a little bit more pointedly, I, correct me if I'm incorrect on this, Measure 110 left. The funding decisions in the state, in the hands of the state and the state council, and it is not providing us administrative costs. It is not necessarily recognizing us as that coordinating authority and paying and offsetting our costs to. Learn what they know by lack of information. And so one of those, I think. That could potentially, if boards racks, be one of the outcomes that the board might seek in this process is making sure that we are paid for our coordination, so that we are making sure. That when we take that community, not competition approach. We can succeed as a county with all of our fellow service providers.
Yeah, that'd be great information to have. I also was your term harm reduction there. I. Was intrigued with that because they were focusing it on something other than what I call harm reduction is. Reducing the harm that you put on the counties for implementing these things. So the unfunded mandates pops up again there again. But anyway, thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Although. I believe in the, the health-based approach is, is the right course of action. But, but I also believe that we need to have a better working relationship and this is what you're talking about with OHA. That, that's, to me, that's where this, this whole system is, is breaking down. And the second bullet under the first main bullet. I'd like to, I'd like to be focused on our CAT, our Hawthorne Walk-In. All, all those different components, but the, the way that I think we should be focusing is around developing the workforce. And making sure that we have that resource available. So I think that, that's the, the second phase of that. It's not just a focus there, but to make sure that we have the resource there so that we don't have to close to walk-ins and the things that we've had to do because of our, our shortfall. And so it, to me, this also comes around to workforce development and recruitment, retention types of things. So that's, I'm just dealing with, I can only deal with the first bullet right now.
I can go next. A great presentation so far to your team. This has been really. I think I understand more of Measure 110 now more than I did before. So thank you so much for that presentation. In terms of the answer to this question, I agree. The first bullet, I basically agree with Commissioner Tree's question that especially both bullet points and the workforce development and. To just, just to sort of be more specific, I think it'll be really ideal if we can. Redirect some money or direct some of that funding to culturally specific behavioral health. Addiction treatment services or in terms of workforce development specific. And I think I, we heard that at the District Eight AOC meeting, you all were in the room. I think that was really clear message that. Workforce is the problem here. But I also think one thing I heard that really resonated with me was this idea of peer support. So I really think that. Some of that funding could be utilized to create or recreate or support. Peer support because I think a lot of people. Have problems utilizing services because of lack of peer support, you know. So I think that's one thing. The addition that I would add to the comment Commissioner Tree's made. In terms of the other bullet points, what outcomes will be with the board like to see in Measure 110? I would like to see the, the gaps that 40, I think you said 49% of the gaps that you talked about had. I think that's one outcome that we can measure. Did we really, how, how close did we get? To, you know, to closing that gap or even halfway closing it. So I think that would be a really good outcome to track. And then also the other gaps that you mentioned around capacity, you know, whether it's workforce or peer support capacity in terms of services. And then equity, the gaps in equity. So I really think those are good. Outcomes to keep an eye on. And, and then also. You know, I'm trying to create a space. Where community-based organizations were, you know, in terms of not workforce related, but also developing community-based organizations, especially culturally specific community organizations. Community-based organizations to try to loop in on this conversation because it's not. I think we need to be fighting mental health and addictions at all fronts. And then sometimes community-based organizations are given small portion of the funding to fight this big fight. So I'm wondering how we can create a bigger space and bigger role for community-based organizations when it comes to outcomes and tracking. And then what role can they play in that outcome? So I think it'd be really ideal if we can. Expand that table of decision-making to include community-based organization, but give them more of a big role, like systems role. And more information. I think keep us up to date as this progresses. And where the conversation is going and yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So for my comments, I join my colleagues in continuing to support the health-based approach. Put it even more strongly. We have a board majority. We should be loud and proud about that. The voters approved Measure 110. As put well at the AOC District Eight meeting. This was years in the making and it's going to take time to make considerable progress. So let's keep going. Not dismantle because people have fears. But rather, let's do the work that we need to do to have a thriving community. So I'm loud and proud on that. Prior to our AOC District Eight meeting, I don't, oh, there's Ms. Kyle in the room with your prior hat on. I think we had, or maybe it was even while you've been an ACA. I recall a presentation, though I can't tell you if it was 2019, 2020, 21, or 2022. About the workforce in all aspects of the healthcare domain. And so I was thinking about that as we had a really useful presentation. Well, we had three. But combined effort at the District Eight meeting. So I, I join positively the remarks about. Continuing to play some role in the many hands makes light work around workforce. Peer support is part of the, the complex puzzle that provides for a complete picture. It, to me, it's overwhelming, but it's over, we have an overwhelming community need. And. Your articulation of the community approach. Versus a competitive approach. Did I?
I stole that from public, the public health process.
But continuing to hear these is really useful. Okay, so as hard it was for me to internalize the facts and figures, sorry, didn't catch it all. I. Understand the, the expanse of the problem, the needs, and are needing to stick to it. To meet this important community need. I appreciated on the prior slide, the Oregon Substance Use Disorder Service. Services Inventory and Gap Analysis that Commissioner Phi was referring to in leveraging that for outcomes. Thank you for bringing that forward. What more information do I, as one of the board members, need to help guide? Do I, as one of the board members, need to help guide around these policy conversations? I think fundamentally is helping to tell that story that it has taken a while for us to get to this place. Systems of care, no matter which slice of it we're looking at. Addiction treatment and triage or mental health or physical health, right, or other aspects of poverty. It's going to take us time to make that headway for the more positive uh, community outcomes. But we have to do this work. Our future relies upon it, but the needs of our community today demand it. So um, thank you. For helping me uh. Provide some shape in my comments. And I know we're not done for today, so let's keep going.
I'm gonna turn it over to Erin. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioners, and we'll get back um, and make sure that we keep you in the loop in this conversation and look at what those direct fiscal impacts are to the county and how we can better. Service those metrics and get that information back. To take on a super not at all harder topic, um. Uh, you may have noticed that over the course of the last, oh, I don't know, decade, there has been a development, or housing development. Shortfall across the state. This is therefore a statewide legislative issue. So as I approached this conversation. Um, and this is part of the updated slides again, is clarifying the questions. Um, so these questions are a little bit new from what was in the original packet, but um. One of the things I need to know as your GR representative in this space that represents both the Land Use and Transportation Department and the Housing. Department is what areas that impact housing outcomes should be our priority for financial resources from the state to invest in. Is it? The planning portion, is it the infrastructure portion? It is, is it how we pay for the development of low-income affordable housing? We always want all three. Um, other people's money is better to pay for things with, um, but. Sometimes we have to prioritize in those conversations. What state reforms should we seek to aid the county's affordable housing, supportive housing investments to meet the community's expectations for those local taxes? How do we enhance? What we're already doing. And then finally, um, the question that we will always ask you is what further information do we need from us? So um, to, to delve into why this is a county topic, it's not normal. For um, a county to be so involved in urban levels of development, um, but the urban unincorporated areas. That are essentially treated as though they have to develop like a city has to develop. And because there is no city sitting in that space. The county is the one that has to take on that workload when the state um, mandates it. And, and they have in a number of different ways. They've been also looking at um, just our processes um, and some other places, but. We also work as a housing authority here in Washington County, and we develop housing as a result. And the Housing Department does a lot of the work to keep people in housing. So we have this dual lens. We sit alone often in conversations because Washington County does so much in that planning and um. Development or the planning processes and building permits operationally. Most county planning departments. Are really limited to the rural residential areas or lots with housing and resource lands. Or maybe serving as planning for the smallest cities within their county, but we have. The functions of a city, so we often sit next to our city colleagues and our um, city partners here in Washington County in these conversations. So there are three big issue, well, there are four big issues that were really identified in the legislative um, conversations around this during legislative days. The fourth one is left off because you've heard it about three hundred times in this presentation is a shortage of workforce. Not just in construction, but also um, there, there was a statewide analysis that showed between four hundred and five hundred. Local government employees are needed to kind of bridge the gap in how housing shortages can be developed, but um, I, I figured we had um, had that conversation. We are very supportive of workforce development across. All platforms that we've encountered as a board and just assumed that here.
So it's in light gray on the slide?
It's always in the background. How we get work done is the workforce. Um, so there are three big areas where this conversation has um, really. Sought to seek reform, and one is the local process, and that is when someone comes in and wants to develop their property. They come in with a land use application, we review it, they get their application approved, and then they go into the building permits process, and then they go through and get inspected, and then they finally have a house they can sell. There is always a push to streamline, and that has costs for us, that has capacity issues for us as a planning entity. It requires balancing our budgets in ways that we make sure that we can do both the long-range planning and the short-term development process. But it also has impacts as we develop housing as the housing authority, and anything that streamlines things on the development side. Is a cost savings and the development community writ large, so for-profit, nonprofit, low-income, median income. High-income housing all want to see faster processes at the local level. But we have to comply with state laws um, related to the processes, local appeals. We have to um, abide by permitting requirements, for example, and this is where Clean Water Services coordinates with the county and some of our responses. We can't just move things along without making sure we're in compliance with our Clean Water Services um, permitting, so that we don't end up out of compliance with DEQ. But the faster development can go, the more housing that can be built. Second, infrastructure costs and how we pay for them is another major area where there's a lot of discussion, and I think. I'm gonna be a um, a little prescriptive here in this area, but infrastructure costs have just come down onto the local governments to pay for. Um, and we have one way of offsetting those costs, really, it's system development charges. And like Clean Water Services mentioned, we have been very defensive in this space. But I think that there are some opportunities to be proactive because honestly, if we want to see a reduction in the price of housing, those infrastructure costs have to be borne by someone else's dollars. We don't have them. Um, and I think the development community and local governments can walk hand in hand in seeking these types of investments. But that's an area for the board to make sure that I'm not going above and beyond your calls for my work. And then finally, and this is a big longstanding conversation, is land availability and planning. Long-term planning as done by this state is intended to find twenty years land supply. And there's a large question about if that has been effective, how we can streamline that. I think within the region, we work at a regional level to really try to identify it, but there have still been questions called as to. Where we are. Do we really have a legitimate twenty or fifty-year land supply? And this creates tension for us as well, because every time the legislature comes in with a planning solution. It takes our Land Use and Transportation Department off of their plans for long-term planning. And puts them in the space of readjusting our development code, our zoning codes. To react to the state's push. Um, so how can they work on your goals as well as readjusting for the state's goals? As well as making sure we're actually responding to the local needs on the ground. But as someone who, as an agency who has to develop, we have to have land where our housing authority can work. More competition for smaller amounts of land drives up costs for us to do our business as a housing developer. And or identifying lots that can be repurposed for purposes of um, creating that affordable housing for low-income and very low income. And keeping people in supportive housing situations where we know in the long term they can continue to live and stabilize. So as this conversation moves forward, there are pushes and pulls on us as a county. In where we focus our efforts and seek the state to reinvest in us. Um, and reinvest in the process and or telling us how to do our jobs. So back to the policy questions. Are there places based on this conversation where you think the state should be prioritizing their financial resources? As they seek to address the development of housing? What reforms should we be working on so that our affordable housing components of the work that we do? Can double down on the work that they're doing at the local level, using those local resources or enhance those projects? Um, we've been able to take advantage of some of those one-off programs. Is that something we want to do more of and, and leverage our funds to go even further? And then finally, of course, what further information do you need? And with that, I'll turn it back to the board to have that conversation.
So how would you like to approach this one? Go through one by one like we did the previous one?
Sure, um. Well, it's always interesting to me when we talk about, because we've been talking about uh, affordable housing for, I don't know, since I was on it. And it always started with. The availability of developable land. And. It seemed like at that point in time, the conversation had no connectivity by what's going to be the cost of land if we run out of it, because you can't manufacture it, obviously. As it ties to providing for adequate and affordable housing. And there was always seemed to be a disconnect in there, so. To me, it's, we're still in that. I know that's not in your policy questions here as far as availability of land. But it has to be a part of the puzzle um, to, to do these, these kinds of things. And I think we're experiencing that right now. If you talk to Comey. He'd say, yeah, that's probably our number one issue is availability of housing that we can uh, convert into an affordable housing environment. So. I guess that's, that's kind of my spiel and. I don't know that that particularly, that perspective has changed statewide.
Who would like to go next? I'll chime in here. Erin, um. I, yeah, I think this is like the first bullet point. It's like a supply and demand question, so I, I, is it fair to say both?
Well, well, I, I think as I said at the beginning, we always go after all.
Yeah.
But sometimes they ask us, which do you prefer? Infrastructure costs or planning grants? And I can't answer that for you. We don't have to decide today either, so it's um. I think here where I'm seeking guidance is, is we have two agencies doing good work that need resources. And then we have another set of partners that we work with that do a lot of the infrastructure development. And obviously, LUT. Does infrastructure, Clean Water Services does infrastructure, but a lot of other service partners provide that infrastructure. So. If we are to proactively seek investments from the state, where do you want to see that money spent? As you think about this today and in the future.
I think. I would say definitely infrastructure investment is really key. But I'm also trying to figure out. For, for me, uh, for, for some reason, I feel like I need to be cautious about. The next bullet point, low-income affordable housing offsets, because I'm not sure. I don't want to say we're investing to create some lenience towards. Developers who will create affordable housing, then, that are not really affordable housing. So I, I don't know, I think um. But I'm in support of low-income housing, whatever that offsets is, but. That benefits the community that really builds and creates an infrastructure that. Is a true sense of low-income communities. So I think I'm full on, and I'm not sure how do we create a pipeline to now mention. Home ownership to this conversation. Maybe that's the planning piece investments that fits into this, but I think um. Home ownership is also um, something that I think uh, impacts housing outcomes and, um, but also. Maybe it's in with the low-income affordable housing. Where it's maybe looped into the homeownership, but I like to, the homeownership piece be bubbled out and called out here, whether it's that. In planning grants or the infrastructure, but um, I like to see it mentioned somewhere that we're forefront centering. To support people in Washington County to own their own home.
So um, to step back into the, your comments about the low-income offsets.
Yeah.
What I heard from you, and I want to confirm, so as Lord thinks about this holistically, that really when we do these. And we support these low-income affordable housing incentivizing programs or paths for low-income housing. That we're ensuring that that, there are pieces in place that ensure that is long-term affordable to low-income earners across, across the county. So it doesn't. You know, stretch out that um, deadline as long as possible so that it remains or becomes permanently available for low-income. So that, that's how. I heard you. I want to be sure that that's what you intended. Okay, thank you.
So on the, on the first bullet, um, infrastructure investments. As a county within the state, um. I think we sit close to the top in terms of urban unincorporated area.
We would be number one.
Number one, Allen District Two, am I there?
No. Not everywhere.
So, so.
There's a big gulf between us and number two.
Yeah, and, and my, my point is that to me, that means that, that, that's the place where I think we should be. Focused because we don't have the resources that other cities do, or are hindered by legislation in terms of annexation. We've got other issues that. And, and I think that that's, that's where we should be, we should be focused. Um. The other two, as you said, Erin, you know, we take what we get certainly, but that's where I, I think the infrastructure investments, and, and I think that we need to. We know our story, but I don't know that state legislators know our story. And I think that that's an important story to tell as, as, as we move down the road here. Um. I'm not sure about what state reforms we should seek uh, on affordable housing. I just don't know. So, but I do have pretty strong conviction about the infrastructure.
So that would be under the more information that you.
Yes.
What are the options?
Well, and options is what I'm.
Yeah.
Commissioner Rogers.
Well, very complex issue, like everything else is. And I think we need to really look at what the causation effects of all this are. And be realistic, and probably most of you won't agree with me, but that's all right. What are we faced in a state that has a nine percent income tax rate? An area which has uh, CAT tax, which is a sales tax on business, a uh, natural housing bond. Not everybody pays for, only those over two hundred thousand. Is we face a lot of taxes. And so what's happening in the world that I happen to practice in is that everybody's looking at how you leave the state. And that's people with money. Um, not a good situation. I've mentioned that around this table before, don't like it. Just had a function not long ago, weeks ago, and these were all major employers, and every one of them was looking at taking resources out. So much like we did with gain share back in the day, we sent to the state, um. If we're going to create these opportunities, and we had governors appearing at our meetings, well, well, most of you, others appearing saying, do this. We said you have to claw back. We have to have some financial resources. So if we're really looking at, at how we create a situation, which we have tight urban growth boundary. I don't oppose any of these things, but that's supply and demand. Do we have a limited supply of property? It's going to create increases in cost. We all know that. Unless we're going to completely abandon our free capitalism system, that's what's going to happen. So where do you get the resources and how do you address your issues? If we're with the king for the day, I'd say if the state mandate, state. Values that we all collectively share. What, how do we share those revenues that we receive from income taxes? I mean, that's important. Should we simply say as advisors, and that could be like Jerry used to be here when he was practicing full-time with me. The best thing you can do is to move to Washington if you're selling your business. The best thing you can do is to look at, you know, where you locate. Because look at the tax structure. It's malpractice not to show them what the income tax impact is on every decision they make. And you might say, well, why would you do that? Because it's malpractice. We don't. And you start looking at how investments are done. I still think our glory days are ahead of us, not behind us. I still believe that if we could convince state to say we need to look holistically our processes. So that you don't move your factory to Ohio because they give you all the free land that you want. Plus the infrastructure investments, and what are we going to do? How are we going to compete against that? How do you compete in a market in which you have limited land supplies and say? gee, come on and visit us. We can't find more than 50 acres to cobble together for your industry or gee, if you come here, we're going to have a cat tax and anything over a million dollars. And you say, well, my costs are 999,000 on that million. You said, it didn't matter. You're going to pay taxes. We, we, we need to look at our taxing policy. I know that's well beyond the conversation here, but to affect most of these things, it gets back to the economics. And I think a county like ours, again, that's why I say we're out of the game in terms of our glory days. We, we have to paint the financial picture because it all boils down to that. You know, if if we all want things and we have aspirations for these things that cost a lot of money. What's the state in the partnership role rather than just say, we're going to adopt this and you figure it out at the local level? We have a lot of smart people in this room. We have a lot of good board members who are attempting to do these things. But we don't have solutions because we don't have resources. So every job we add, frankly, without jobs, although this doesn't matter, for every job we add, we don't get nine percent of their income or even four or five percent. We don't. I mean, that goes to the state. So when do we start the dialogue to say, we, we need a partner in this, not a silent partner. We need a financial partner. They'll actually help us to finance up these things. Because much like gain share and what I'm a big proponent of that. You're getting the revenue. We get the cost. That's not a fair trade. And there's not any partnership that I've been involved. More than you wanted to hear, but that's, I think, towards.
Okay, so I'll add my fifth voice to this. I want to make sure that the state legislators are reminded that we as a state and an area have had a recognized shortage for additional housing since the Great Recession over 13 years ago. And we're still working to try and address that. But I think I'm, I'm thinking of a different approach. Rather than answering the question that they're asking us. Turn it around, potentially turn it around. We talked about state mandates. They have state mandates that they have previously chosen to take on. For example, there were statewide climate goals. And as a result of different industry or different inventories, excuse me, different word altogether. Going back to 2005, then seven, then 11. We ended up in this region going through, I know two of my colleagues at least remember climate smart communities. And a heavily heavy reliance on expanding public transit. And here we sit. Still not having the state local match for Southwest Corridor. We've done the work for that. We need the state to come through. The state also mandated middle housing. We've done the work with regard to our planning codes. We need them to recognize that it isn't just a biennium of work. That just like it's been 13 years since the Great Recession, it's going to take a little time. Could they help? Yes. Stop undermining us. There are reasons why we have processes in place, which gets to another point. I'll never run for state office. Okay? It just isn't my bag of tricks. But I certainly appreciate the reasons why there are development codes at the county and at the city. So that we're all assured that when we live in a building, it's a safe building. And that the quality of these buildings has improved over time. It's meant electrical safety. So we don't have house fires like we used to decades, decades, decades ago. I realize I'm going way back. But similarly, with supporting good practices that ensure we have quality living arrangements. Part of our story here in Washington County is we chose to mandate ourselves. Right? We're the ones that have taken on since at least the 1980s, expanding neighborhoods without requiring that they be in cities. So I've already asked our legal team to get some information available or together around our urban planning area agreements and maps so that we can be better informed about these areas. The bottom line, we can no longer afford to do this work. We do not have any additional headroom in our general pop property tax growth to pay for the work that needs to be done. Nor have state planning grants made up the difference leading to future years. We have, I feel that I have to be honest in representing that. It doesn't mean we should be spending our time telling them the whys and what for's that got us to this place. Rather, we are in this place. And we know loud and clear these last two budgets with the forecast for the next couple of budget years of increasing pain. And we've learned a boatload about unmet needs that we as a county government have to step up to the plate for. So I jumped to your last question. I don't expect GR to put this information together. I started with our legal team. And Ms. Angie knows about it as well, so it doesn't surprise her. But it's just going to take a little time to get that information together, to bring it to the board for further conversation. And let me also state, I am a huge fan of cities. I've also lived, I lived in 15 years in an urban unincorporated area up in Bethany for 15 years. So a goodly amount of time. So we have to figure out how to do a better job. We do, I think, need to prioritize, going to your first question, infrastructure investments. Because this is a lot, some of it is seen, right? Streets, roads, highways. Our legislators can see that, but there's an awful lot of infrastructure that isn't seen visibly. And so I think we need to make sure that we're bringing voice to that. There's a reason why across Washington County and in our 13 cities, they've worked so hard to have sidewalks, connectivity and other things in neighborhoods. Because that is community infrastructure. There, I would say, we don't have to be the initial voice, but we can play a supportive role. So part of what I've been thinking about is we've been going through all of this information today is everything's not at one level. For me, there's different levels. So I'm very interested in seeing how we can support others like through the League of Oregon Cities, through the Metropolitan Mayor's Association, through the Washington County Mayors. On low income, I, low income affordable housing offsets. I can't speak to that right now because I can't remember what the offsets is all about. But I am very grateful for the work that the state takes on for administrate administering the low income housing tax credit. I was trying to get that five letter acronym. It's not going to work. Sorry. And on a per development basis, I think it isn't something that I see us as a county or UUAs being able to take on. They're just so many things. Our staff is trying mightily to do a good job on middle housing. We need to give them a break. We need to let some of these things take time, implementation time before we, we are overloaded by yet another program that deviates our attention from that already good work. I do support not only the affordable housing, but also the homeownership. And would be willing for us to add our voice, joining in support of others or whatever recapitalization that is needed or additional support there. And I know that we as a region are so very fortunate to have the affordable housing bond measure that the voters approved as well as as the supportive housing services measure. It's taking time for us to get all of the impactful improvements in place. But our community has the opportunity to see the early results. And we're making headway. And I think we're going to be in a much different place in three more years, so at a five year mark than we have been. So I think we have much to be loud and proud of.
If I could just add on something that you said, which kind of was a little bit of a light bulb for me is that you pointed out the fact that Roy and I and you have been kind of in in the political arena for a number of years. And what we forget, I think, is that there's a number of our legislators that have not. And there's a whole bunch of new people that we're trying to advocate stuff to. That seems like we've got a lot of history here, but they don't have any of that. So somehow if we could give them a little bit of background and education as we move into this, I think it will help them.
Yeah.
See what we're trying to say.
So one way I managed myself on that, and I forgot to complete this, was when I was talking about the development codes. I also meant to mention community plans, right? The five of us are very aware of those plans, right? So if a state legislator says, well, you know, I'm an incoming legislator and I want to make this situation better. I'm going to make my mark on this. It's like, have you ever been through a development code review? Have you ever participated in community plan development and adoption? And if the answer is no, just stop. Don't do anything to us right now. Just ask a different question. How can we help? How can we help you do the job that we've already asked you to do over these last 20 years to make this a better place to leave? So that's where, sorry, I'm on a soapbox today. Tell a slightly different story, get them to think differently.
So we're well over our allotted time.
Yep, but we've got an important, one more slide.
One more big slide to go through, but I think this one's a lot more directive, a lot less broad in scope, hopefully. So one thing that we had when we had conversations with you or posited these questions via email. And as reflected in the conversations we had both with you and with our departments and a number of other folks. We need workforce. We need stable financing and it's not just one department that needs those things. So as we were to draft our priorities, we want to make sure that you remain comfortable that we state things like stable resources or county services is that broad statement instead of saying stable resources for community corrections. That does not mean we leave community corrections behind. We use them as an example. We work for them and advocate through for the, for them in the process in all the different state budgets. So just checkpointing here, are you comfortable if as we draft these proposed priorities, that they are that broad? Looking for a thumbs up or thumbs down on.
I, I am supportive. My concern though is that state legislators wouldn't pass the test of what are county services. So as long as there's something that gives them that.
So if you look at what our agenda normally does is we state the priority and then we show our work. And we would use those identifying those county services. And the other thing that I think we've clearly heard is how are we telling our story and making sure you have that information? That is something this GR team is really well poised to do and has been thinking about since, I think, before they started. And we're going to be working with Philip and our departments in making sure that consistently and throughout the work that we do as all of the county, we are telling the story of who we are and what we've accomplished and why they need to get out of our way if they want to see things done. I don't know.
I just, I was really struck by Monday night when both Chair Smith and Chair Kefory said they had no idea what county services were.
Yeah, and that's the place where we'll work with AOC to help them as they develop that out as well. So.
Erin, can I just jump in here? I do want to speak to capacity about telling our story too. And Philip cannot be everywhere for everyone. And so we will also be looking, we will need to look at contractual resources to support this work. And we do understand that it's a board priority to tell our story. We don't have the staff capacity to tell our story in the way that I hear the board wanting the story told. And also the hunger from our legislature and our community to hear the story.
And one way where the DR team is trying to really implement some profound change of our legislative delegation, understanding who we are, is to revitalize the Washington County Caucus at the state level. And start those conversations on where they can see wins for Washington County and work together as one group of legislators, understanding and knowing what Washington County is across the board. To that end, we do need to develop an agenda. Based on the uniformity around the comments of both the board and our departments, we kind of identified three main topics about that we think would suit you well for priorities. And then kind of asking the question on the last bullet point. So the, the first three are sustainable, long-term funding for services, defining those services as part of that. Increasing workforce development and recruitment for county specific needs. And then just writ large, all workforce investment is good investment. And then the long-term continuation of gain share as a means of providing resources back to us, I think are three very obvious priorities we've heard across the board. Just looking for head nods that that's a direction that you would all like to go. And then the third, no, fourth, I can count. State resources for specific capital projects. This is where we can really find a win for our caucus to go behind the courthouse funding or and potentially the CAT as well, which are most closely poised to some sort of legislative success. Okay, we'll, we'll move there. This last, this next question, other topics that should be included as priorities, might need further time, given where you are in your day's schedule. We can continue this conversation as we bring back a sort of a draft of what we've got so far in November. But we'll be open to hearing your comments and having conversations with you. Similarly, what other further information needs do you have as we develop these priorities? I'm going to take this as kind of as the person with the microphone right now say, please inform us of that. Send us emails. We'll work with you. We'll work with your staff assistants and the departments to make sure you have the information that you might need. Or if you have questions about what's going on politically, we'll answer them in the most nonpartisan way we possibly can.
But I think setting the stage for that, if we could go two slides ahead on the agenda development timeline.
So.
Keep what she just said in mind as you look to that November box.
Yep.
Okay, we're pretty much at capacity. So sure, I could dream up a lot of other stuff that would make a lot of other people really busy, but they're already really busy. So we really have to look at how are we going to be effective? So I think if, if I can help wrap us up. I think you've got a good plan. You've brought us a lot of information today. You've heard us reflect. We benefited from it. We learned a lot. We hope that you've heard clear direction from this board. And we look forward to our continued engagement. I do realize that there are legislative days for shaping up. We do read your GR Weekly, so if there's something between now and November that you need direction on, then please maximize that tool as well as Ms. Angie's utilization of leadership. as well as Ms. Angie's utilization of leadership communication. And we'll go from here.
Absolutely. We really appreciate your time and consideration of a lot of tough things. So thank.
We've got a great team. We're relying upon you. Yes, pressure, but we know that you can do the job for Washington County. So thank you for being a rock star team.
We will continue the tradition.
So one more comment, Tom. I am, we have broadband in here in a couple of different places. I am meeting with legislators because COPAK has run into some unanticipated issues. And so I'm meeting with legislators to find out if there's legislative processes that we can go through to be able to help us develop that middle mile. And so I'd like to include you in on that. The next one is October 10th at four o'clock.
That's still me, Commissioner.
Oh, I thought this was under Tom's. I was really hoping it was under Tom.
Yeah, I know, you like to get rid of me, but yeah.
Yeah.
And it remains an economic development priority of consideration.
Okay, October 10th at four o'clock.
I will see what my calendar. Thank you. I'll, I'll work with Megan.
Not, I'm going to get Tom to join me.
Thank you all very much.
Might have to pass that by Ms. Angie. Okay, we need a break. Everybody needs a break for 15 minutes. So we're going to see everybody back here at 3:10 promptly, please. Okay? Terrific.
I think I'm one person.
Don't be going to get another sweet drink.
I'm looking at.
But she gave you her vote in the executive session.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Didn't I hear that?
So our next topic is Public Safety Training Center. Welcome Sheriff Garrett. If I could do a lead in to this, I really appreciate the sheriff working on this topic. It came as a result of my asking from the opening of the Public Safety Training Center, which the previous board had committed us to, to revisit the topic to let us know how it was delivering the service compared to the reason why the board invested in it. So we're all here to learn more. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Chair Harrington. Good afternoon to you and to commissioners. I'm Sheriff Pat Garrett, joined today by Lieutenant James Wheaton, who is our command officer over Training Center Operations Staff. And on behalf of the almost 600 staff at the sheriff's office, I thank you for your commitment to excellent training, for your support to the Training Center so our staff can be best prepared to meet the challenges of their work and so they know that we care about them, their safety and their service to our community. We're here today to provide you a review, as you said, Sheriff Harrington, of the Training Center since its opening. And with that, we'll start with a facility review. The Training Center consists of significant training space to support areas for defensive tactics training, classrooms, an indoor range, emergency vehicle operations, and a scenario village and jail housing unit with booking area that supports scenario-based training. Full-time staff who support this operation are enlisted here as well. Basically, five staff members to meet our leadership and administrative needs, along with eight full-time trainers and a training technician. You can see on the right side, our line staff with subject matter expertise and a variety of skills. They are available and supplement our trainers during training peaks, like an in-service training or a new academy, a recruit training. And that's together really how we get the training done at the end of the day. That's provided in your summary sheet. And you will likely recall, the capital investment for this training asset was about $20 million. That was about 4.3 in land, million in land acquisition, and about 16 million in building and property renovations. Looking at this year's budget, Training Center revenues total about $17,000 in brass recovery and solar energy. And expenses are budgeted at just over $3 million in personnel, equipment, and supplies. The solar panels, which are just barely visible at the very top of this photo in this slide, they're ground-framed installation. The solar power generated from the array is not used to power the building. It's pushed back into the grid, the energy is. And the county receives credits for this solar generation. We can say that the credits really reduce the cost of the Training Center because these credits go to the energy bill at, of, at the Training Center. The challenges we overcame with the acquisition of this amazing training resource include, before the Training Center, we had multiple scattered trending locations that required some lengthy time to travel to get there and then to set up and then to train and then to disassemble because they weren't secure, they weren't designed and specific for public safety training. So we took great care not to break things. We had, we had great support from the community, but those trending sites were not committed and sometimes we lost access to them kind of late in the planning process. Security was, could, could be an issue at some of those sites. And the Public Safety Training Center, really, they overcame every one of the challenges you can see here that we were hoping to overcome. As pictured on this graphic, just a bit of a map of the metro area going all the way over to Madras in the lower right corner, we no longer have to drive to Corvallis or to the Portland International Raceway for any emergency vehicle operations training, one of the highest liability tasks of our staff. The same goes for not having to drive to Madras for certain scenario-based jail training. And training for our mobile field force at Camp Rialia can now be conducted at the Training Center. We occasionally go to the Columbia County Range for some, some very specific range training, but almost all of our, of our range training is done now at the Training Center. We haven't used the Tri-County Gun Club since the Training Center opened. Senator Wheaton?
I think Sheriff. I think you, Chair, and Commissioners. Moving all of our training under one roof has, we've been able to make some significant improvements. We've increased our efficiency, which we'll go into in a minute. We're able to train based on the needs, and these are real-time needs from the divisions that we're serving out in, in the jail and in patrol. We've increased the student experience, which we found that when students enjoy training, they are, their skill levels go up and become more competent, which makes them more competent or confident. And, and then we are able to give a better product out to our citizens. So we also have, have the ability now to increase, increase the quality improvement. So in other words, we, a couple of slides back, the sheriff talked about how many positions were added here. So some of that is their, their leadership positions, to be able to really get in there and manage some of that quality control. So in terms of increased efficiency, you can see the picture there, the two deputies back behind them. I see that there's a, a set of cones, so it could be, you know, hundreds of cones. So that in this. So that in this particular training iteration, this is where the deputies would go out and they would drive through the cones, and they'd be, be instructed by a, an instructor. And some of that setup could take an hour to set those cones up. And when we were training out in some of the community areas that the Sheriff was talking about, required a significant amount of setup. And then, of course, at the end of the day, we'd have to set that, we'd have to tear all that down and then do it over and over and over again, sometimes multiple times for a month. So bringing this, this area here, which is our, we call it our emergency vehicle operations pad, it's basically the big parking lot that we can set up for training our vehicle operations. And we could just set it up one time, and that's an example of something that we can use for, you know, the whole training iteration, and we don't have to, we don't have to reset every day, which increases the training time for us. So it's really increased our efficiency. That's just one. We've done that with all of our different types of training that we do. Going to move from the pictures, from left to right here, this, the upper picture there on the left is, that's one of our tactical sergeants. He has, you can see he has a canine there. He, this is our, this picture was taken in our scenario village. So for those who remember from the tour, it's basically a mock-up of a neighborhood inside a warehouse. And so we're able to control the environment in there and able to do scenario-based training. And the deputies can show up to a call and they can see, you know, see the structure. And those are all skills that we teach in training. We're able to analyze if they move up through those. The moving to the center picture, you can see that picture was taken in our mat rooms. The instructor there in the red and the students are in the black uniforms. This is where we would do our defensive tactics training. So this is all our arrest and control maneuvers, our, our tactics to take people into custody, deescalate situations. All of those skills are learned on our mat room, in our mat rooms. Then moving to the far right photo, you see this is a mock-up of our jail. So if you remember from the, from being in there, it's a, it's, it's a training area that closely resembles that what the deputies work in every day. And you can see the, where the hands are sticking through. That's just an example of the deputies being able to train one of the skills that they are, that they use day in, day out. So I'll kind of come back down and touch a couple of the points on the bottom. This is one of the most, it's, it's unique for the Pacific Northwest, a training environment that's specifically designed for the jail. So some places have an open housing unit that they can use, but this is an area that's padded, and the deputies can real, do real-life training inside a jail environment. The bottom point there really says a lot too for us, the safety and security. And I know the Sheriff talked a little bit about this, but just to kind of compare and contrast here, the previous location, which we were also happy for, for our training, but any staff member could have access, so they could come and go. Anyone with a mag key could kind of, kind of walk in there and, and at any time, really, even during training sometimes. So our new facility is geared very similar to the DPSST Academy, which is very sort of locked down, so to speak. And, and only people who have access in there are instructors and people that are actively training. And so it just gives us a prize that provides all of us with a much safer training environment. So we're really happy and thankful to have that. Moving to the middle there, the training staff, we have full-time trainers. So we, we added training positions. We now have, if you can imagine in your mind's eye room, much like this, where they're all, all the trainers are in little cubbies, they can turn their chairs around and they can talk. They engage in different conversations about tactics and what's happening in the real world. They're able to create lesson plans. There's a conference table in there, and they can really just build training plans and, and use that real information to getting from the divisions and in, increase our training. So it's been a really great advancement in our training. I'll just touch on the last point there with the second point down, which is increased retention. The level of training that we're able to provide our deputies, we're getting great feedback from it. The students love to train here, and they're getting good training. And then that, they are able to tell their families that they're getting all this good training, which is keeping them safe and keeping our community members safe, and that has a very close tie to retention. So, yeah, we're, we're happy to have that. In the student experience, the, when the students are enjoying themselves, they, they are learning more. So I mean, we've seen that time and time again. Some of the ways that they're enjoying a little bit more is, before this Training Center, we would be very siloed in our approach. You would, a deputy might go to the shooting range and they would shoot all day. And sometimes, you know, it's in the heat of the summer, you've got yellow jackets floating around you. And, and at the end of that big, long day of shooting, you have to get down on your hands and knees and you're, and you're picking up brass. This has significantly changed that. So we're able to, a student can come in, they shoot at the range for maybe a couple hours. They could then move into, to a classroom situation, or even into, out, out on the driving pad. So it's much more of a dynamic learning environment, and we've got a lot of great feedback from the students on that. Also, of course, we were able to, because the students now don't have to travel all these distances, they, that manifests in increase in training time. There's just a quick shout out there at the bottom dot for our pre-academy training. So this is our, when we say pre-academy, we're talking about an academy that's in, in addition to the DPSST Basic Police Academy. So all of our graduates at Washington County, when they walk across the stage at DPSST, they're, they not only get the information that's, they're gaining, they gain in DPSST, but all of the gaps are filled in from before during our pre-academy training. We identify those gaps in training, and so our students kind of get to fill in some of that stuff before they even get to the, the academy down there. In terms of quality improvement, so the, the scenario-based training really is the flagship of our training in general. So if you can imagine this, essentially, we can take a student, they can, we can teach them in the classroom. We teach them criminal law, we teach them what they have the legal authority to do or not do. And we can teach that in this training classroom, then we can move them out onto the, into one of the other training areas where they can then test their skills. So for example, a student, a new recruit deputy might be driving around in, on the EVOC pad through all the cones, and they have an instructor sitting next to them and, and getting evaluations as they do that. They're then dispatched a call, which they have to pick up the radio and communicate with dispatch, which is also a police skill that we teach in training. Then they have to, then they would show up to the call in the training scenario village. And this is all part of the same interaction or iteration that just flows through. And they come into the, the training scenario village, and they can handle the call. And then they're evaluated in real time and provided feedback by the instructor, and the instructor can, then they have an opportunity to, to implement that feedback. And, and so it's actually, and then they just do that over and over and over again, and their skills weak. So we're incredibly thankful to have that opportunity. Just a little touch on some of the numbers for training. So this is our baseline training. This does not include specialized team training, doesn't include any of our specialized equipment. But 54 training hours a year through six training cycles, about one every other month or so. This is the Plan A. So sometimes it doesn't happen this way because of staffing and some other things. But this is what we shoot for every year, and about, about a month, as you can see, 28 to 32 days. Iterations, we just mean a day of training there. And of course, we have to support 24-hour operations. That requires some logistics there. I'm not going to go over all the different things that we teach, essentially everything, all things law enforcement, de-escalation, everything, even the things through that, that all county employees get, such as harassment, workplace instability, and all those things, all things police, we, we handle at our Training Center.
Before you move on?
Yes, Madam Chair.
This, this was an aspect of this presentation that I felt was really new for me to internalize. And I'm not sure that I got it all. But this really speaks to what the deputies go through each and every year, right? So in terms of getting all those, all the employees needed through this, you have multiple cycles that happen through the year. So the 28 to 32 training iterations are those. So I'm trying to, I'm not following the formula is my problem. So each person goes through about 54 training hours a year. And you have six different cycles that there, that you're able to host each employee through the course of a year. Is that right?
That's correct, Madam Chair. So like, for example, we'd have a, a training cycle in January, where we have to get all of our employees through that at the Sheriff's Office. So we do that in about 32 days, somewhere around 30 days. So they'd be, each one of those days is 10 hours. So that's, well, minus lunch, so really nine hours of training, eight, you know, between eight and nine hours. And, and that's where you would get your six cycles. So then every, so every deputy and, and sometimes every employee, we do non-certified and certified in some of these sessions. So they would get that in January, then there would be a break, and we would train other things like our pre-academies and things like that. Then all of us would come back and we would train again in March. And then we'd all do the same thing over again, and we would do that six times throughout the year.
So one of colleagues, the reason why it was important to me to be able to fully appreciate the facility and the caring costs, the yearly caring cost of having this is we support, we, we need, want and need our employees to be trained and at the ready, because it's an incredibly demanding job, right? But I couldn't figure out how to answer the question, are we using it sufficiently, right? And there was this, there's occasionally this idea that it could be used by other forces in order for us to get more benefit through other agencies for the sunk investment of building this facility. But first and foremost, I wanted to make sure that the Sheriff's Office gets what it needs. And so it's this kind of information that helped me realize, you know, the physical structure. We've been on multiple tours, we've been in the building before, but how does the process work? So thank you for your patience in putting all this together and helping me better understand how it works in practice so that you have a ready force to do the work that we ask you to do each and every day of the year.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. That means a lot. I know all of us at the Sheriff's Office, that, that support. So we really appreciate that. And to touch on your question on the, the triaging, there is a, there's a system in place to, we make sure that our, our deputies are trained first, and then we open it up to other places. So we have, you know, our, our academies, the pre-academies, that's a, that's a priority for venues scheduling. And then our in-service trainings, of course, and then it kind of goes on through there. So you would allow, for example, we wouldn't, we wouldn't ask someone to host a training in a class app, you know, until we get all of our, our sessions covered, so.
Okay, thank you.
And I will pass it to the Sheriff for the partnerships.
Thanks, Ben. We, we know over the past two years that our staff has gone through the doors of the Training Center and received training over 1,700 times. Just kind of give you a sense for the frequency and the, and the total training, training for our, our, our staff. But we also are really focused on county partnerships and in, in opening up that Training Center to benefit our partners in Washington County. This photo is of a mental health response team, which I know you're quite familiar with. In addition to hosting training for our inter-agency teams that come in from, you know, various police departments to, to work with us on inter-agency teams, the Training Center allows us to host more specialized training and send people away less because we can do the training here. And when we do the training here, hosted specialized training at the Training Center, we get some extra seats. So it's, it's more economical for us and our local partners, it's local for them instead of traveling out of, out of the city or out of the state. We have hosted training, has provided instructions for about 900 students these past two years. Many of them have been our staff, but a majority of these students are from other public safety agencies in Washington County and from across the Pacific Northwest. In, in subjects that you see on the screen, in addition to like legal force update, de-escalation, conflict resolution, computer forensic evidence processing. In addition, the Training Center is the county location to provide training and crisis intervention training for all first responders. It's that 40-hour course that is, happens at the Training Center, provided for, for students from across multiple agencies in, in our county. The pre-academy, our, our recruit academy for new deputies, when they first arrive, we have, have, have had cycled 90 staff through the new academy over the past two years. And twice over the past year, we have also, in response from our requests from the Sherwood Police Department, we've allowed a Sherwood new officer to be in our academy. That's beneficial because we work shoulder to shoulder with our partners in the community, and we also benefit from a Sherwood instructor to help our instructors. So there's some opportunity, I think, moving forward to perhaps do some more of that. Just kind of wrapping up, the future of the Training Center, the photo is of, that you see here is of a recent community college class that visited the Training Center. At a time when we need all the help we can get with recruiting, the Training Center is one of our best recruiting assets because applicants like this class, they see the commitment that Washington County leaders, people like you have for training our staff and being committed to training, so they are prepared to do their, their job for our community. What's the return on investment? So that's a terrific question. It's worth noting, training is prevention. It's hard to kind of measure prevention. It, it's challenging to put a monetary value on prevention. When things go right, there's no headline, right? We intend to analyze the ROI more with more focus in the future, but I'll share several factors that point to significant public safety value for this Training Center. According to our county risk management, staff injuries this past fiscal year dropped 40% compared to the fiscal year before this Training Center was opened. So that was FY 1819. We understand it's a multi-variable analysis, right? Because there's COVID, which also impacts our operations. It's, it's also true, though, that total dollars paid from injuries for training and non-treading injuries have, have trended down over the past six years to include these, these years where the Training Center has been online. So there are some, there are some encouraging data to back it up. We also know that we are training more with the same dollars. We are training in more skill areas with the same time. By reducing travel time, along with having dependable training venues, we are reducing payroll costs. Hosting specialized training is less costly than sending folks out of town. The increased space allows us to return to training more quickly than otherwise during our experience with COVID. And we had a lot of room to sort of get our toes back in the water as it started to lessen its grip. Even with recent long delays at the State Academy, this Training Center allows us to continue a deputy's development well into six months. If there's a delay at the Academy, which has been in the news lately, we can still continue that training with this facility and with our trainers. One last example of return on investment is our tactical negotiations team. It's the option of last resort for our community and our, and our, and our police officers for very high-risk incidents. We have a really impressive safety record with that team. It's high liability function. The team has an impressive record over the past year. For the calendar year 2021, 128 activations with 124 dangerous individuals who were safely detained. Only one person was injured during their detention, but he was firing us at us at the time. And he only came away with a broken bone in his hand. No officers were injured. So there's really, there's good anecdotal evidence and data to show that we are on the right track with this Training Center. I just thank you for your time and allowing us to talk about it, and we'd love to answer any questions.
I have a question. Thank you very much. And it's, it's impressive. It was impressive previously, but, and it continues to be. How do we tell this story publicly? Because, you know, I think that one of the things that we, we face with our community is, is making sure that our community understands our, our public safety approach and how we're doing. And I happen to believe that a big part of that would be a, a sense of well-being around how, how our deputies are trained. So, you know, I don't know how we tell this story and, you know, if we, if we can or not. So what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I'd like to handle that. Thank you, Commissioner. I think simply put, Washington County Sheriff's Office is a learning organization, and we always have been. And so from the first day a recruit deputy steps foot into our building, they're learning and they never stop learning. And so what this building does is allow us to, to continue that growth and that development and enhance it into a level that is unparalleled in, in any.
But how does my neighbor know that?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
So I, you know, I think we leverage what we've learned over these past two years, and that is using technology. So we, we evolved our community academy, for example, to be, you know, live web-based. I think there's some technology out there. We could have, we, we, we could live tour, recorded tour, showcase some of our instructors, and have open houses as well. I think there is, frankly, we haven't thought of that. I appreciate the suggestion. It's, it's something we could certainly work on in the future.
Well, actually, to piggyback on that too, now I think I'm understanding physically, how do we do it? Well, actually, to piggyback on that too, now I think I'm understanding physically, how do we do it? Like, how do we talk to people? So we do numerous presentations. We've done a few at the at Pacific University where we've hosted some the DA's office, we do open a class called Power Curves, which is we have community members come in and that one's specifically around female safety, those kinds of things. We teach, you know, how to look at your surroundings and those kinds of things. So we do a number of those already, but of course, you know, there are a lot of things that we can do to beef that up.
You know, I, just a little suggestion might be to when we, when we're at the CPO meetings and you're giving an update on crime statistics or whatever it might be, it might be interesting to just throw in at the CPO meetings. You know, by the way, we did X hours of training this month on these particular topics. And I'm I'm just trying to break down that myth about, you know, training and and how prepared our deputies are, a potential myth.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, that'd be great to have good information. I go out to the six cities that are in my district and I meet their city councils once a quarter and, you know, this would be good information to, don't forget, we have this training facility and this is what we're doing with it. I wouldn't want to do that every time, but certainly, you know, occasionally, certainly remind them of that because again, they they turn over people, new counselors, new mayors, we're going to see in November. So it'd be important that we make sure we communicate that. So on a different thing, if money wasn't an object, what could we do to enhance this facility?
The, I would say our priority right now would be to increase our analytical and administrative support. So that's, that's one thing is getting where we, we're in a very comfortable situation where we have trainers, we have program managers, we have full-time employees who are able to manage the programs, but each each time we enhance that, there's this wave of administrative work that needs to be done and we haven't, we haven't increased that staff group. So administratively, it would be nice to have more people to be to do those tasks and to really dig into some of that on the analytical side. I would love to be able to take our team to the next level by by making informed decisions based on data. So we're reaching out there, we're we're doing analysis of what's happening in our communities and we're able to link that directly with data to show this is what's working and this is how, and we can prove that it's working because of this. And and we need an analyst, we need analytical assistance to do that, that sort of thing. So that'd be kind of on the personnel side. And on the other side, technology, I think our technology, and we're working on that at the training center, but technology's working through some of those efficiencies. That's, that's a priority right now is getting, getting that going and figuring out what exactly we can do in terms of technology to make it run smoothly there.
So do you think we're using this facility at its capacity?
I think we're just getting started. I think we're we're just learning out of COVID. We're coming out of it now. And one, I should just actually talking out in the back, one of the things I love about my job so much is I feel like I'm building and growing every day. Like, we are building stuff actively. It's, this is not done at all. This is just the beginning. The foundation has been laid by our predecessors and thank goodness to the community for doing, for giving us this. And now we're ready to take it to the next level and that that happens every single day in that building.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Willie, if I can jump in here too, and thank you to our sheriff's office partners for providing kind of the operational needs. In the future, as we start to launch the county's first capital improvement plan, it is about marrying the operational needs, as you highlighted, and thank you for bringing out data-driven decision-making. That piques my curiosity and interest. But we also have to blend the capital needs moving forward. And so you heard how operations of the sheriff's office depends on training, so making sure that we have a plan for replacement of roofs, replacement HVAC so that this facility doesn't go down. So those will be the conversations that we'll be starting to have in this upcoming operating budget. But those are also things we need to plan for and work in parallel.
Any other commissioner questions or comments?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Good to see you, Sheriff, and nice to meet you, Lieutenant. Great presentation, a lot of information. And I think one of the easiest question I have, and then I have another question. The easiest question I have is, do you do the community academy through this train, training facility? Is this where it's conducted?
Yes, our, we have a community academy, we do any sort of academies, reserve academies, all of those are housed out of our training center. Any sort of community events other than the ones that we actively go out to that are that are based in the community.
And then the other question I had for you both is if you do any scenario-based training where for people with limited English. And then I thought, wait a minute, I don't really understand if there, you know, the composition of your staff, how many speak another language? So I don't know if you have that number, how many of the employee, employees, especially people who are doing patrolling and interacting with the community, how many of them speak another language? And then if you do a scenario-based training based on limited English proficiency?
I don't have the numbers for that, Commissioner, but I do know that our, when our staff members are developing those trainings, they always have an eye on all of those things. Diversity, equity, inclusion, and trying to keep also the mental health component in mind when they're building those scenarios. Specifically, you know, having us like, for example, like a Spanish-speaking role player in a scenario. I can't really think of any in particular that we've done off the top of my head, but I do know that we have trained that in the past, but I don't, I don't know of any that I could point to at this point in time. It it would be more of like a, if a deputy shows up, what kind of barriers, maybe they have a communication barrier. It's almost like an umbrella of you show up and you you're having a difficult time communicating with this person for whatever reason. And how do you work through those challenges? We we, that is a cornerstone of the training is is navigating some of those trainings. I think that's a great idea and a great, you know, room for improvement for sure.
Oh, my stat, Commissioner, I love the question. And our scenario-based training is limited only by our imagination and staff tend to show up and they get involved in those scenarios and they're and they're thinking to themselves, what challenging problem am I going to have to overcome to get through this scenario? And a lot of it is communication. Someone's not responding, they have a they have a behavioral health issue or they or they are they're deaf. As Lieutenant Wheaton remarked, I can't think of an, I can't think of an independent example where we've had somebody who doesn't speak a language as a barrier, but that's a wonderful suggestion. And so when we have a scenario where things are simple and they go right, the staff can't believe it. Because they're used to be really being challenged in those scenarios. So that in the real, in in real life, they're better prepared to meet those challenges when they come. So thank you for this, this suggestion, though. That's, that's really wonderful suggestion.
Two quick points for you to consider. You always could take a look at the ROI in terms of financial, but you need to think a little more out of the box, honestly. I heard what your explanation is in saying there are measurements that you can use to show that your rate of return on a facility like that. Retention is about one and a half to two times the cost for everybody you lose. So if you're keeping people for length of time because of this training, is that adding industrial accidents claims, you mentioned that and that's important one. Costs of using other facilities. So I I would hope that maybe that you could take a look and say, let's look at measurements. I mean, counting world is all about past stuff, but we're also learning, look at future stuff and saying, how do, how do I assign costs and maybe outside the wheelhouse of what you have internally. But there are folks in the county who probably can do that. My second point would be that I always hear the training is a way to recruit people and it's helpful. What I think industry and private side is finding out to develop the talent instead of always looking to recruit. And so are there young women and men who maybe don't have a conventional education but would like to and have, you know, the kind of positive values and skill sets that you're looking for, but they need to be developed. So I heard your academy being there for people who are going to the other academy that you all go to, but maybe have been hired. What what you might consider is what if we developed an academy of feeder into our our system that we would take young people, men and women who would like to be in law enforcement, maybe they're out of the military, you know, maybe they're out of other sources, just people that we could say, we'll invest some and then we, incentive for them is is that maybe you'll help pay for that college education that they need if they meet certain parameters and invest certain amounts of time. But you'll invest in them for a career and a career is important. And I would suspect if you open it up to, you know, a dozen or two dozen people who say, I'd like to be a, I'd like to be a cop. I want to be a police officer. If you put that academy and you use your facilities and said, here's the incentive, you know, maybe we'll pay you some stipend to to train. Maybe we'll give you some reward by paying for that college education. Instead of you out begging and borrowing like everybody else to try to steal somebody from some other force or get somebody out there, I think you could develop your own workforce. I think you have the talent, you have the facility. Just a, just a thought.
I love that point, Commissioner. And that, I think, goes to Commissioner Fie's question too, of the community academies. And I don't actually remember when the last time we did that, probably pre-COVID, but as we get into those community academies, we start doing more of those. And I really do think that's the way of the future. Anytime we can get those touch points out in our community members and we're able to get that information out and sort of funnel them through, we have done a little bit with our recruitment team where we brought Schumachanet class through on tours and kind of put them through an orientation of sorts at the training center. And that is a very big recruiting tool. We've seen that and and heard of the benefits from that. So thank you for that, Commissioner.
Well, thank you, colleagues, and thank you to the sheriff for bringing this first assessment forward for us. I have some thoughts about future years, you know, thinking ahead, that I'd be happy to share with you. First and foremost, I think your present today, your presentation today showed that the investment of public money into this facility was a wise investment. And not only was it wise, so thank you, Commissioner Rogers, for participating in that. But it's also delivering good value to our community members and to our workforce now and into the foreseeable future. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Sheriff.
Keep up the good work.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Alrighty, that's it for the key topics, but now we need to move into executive session. And this will be pursuant to ORS one nine two point six six zero sub two sub H with regard to potential litigation. So don't worry, everybody, we're going to give you five minutes to walk out of the room and say, okay, I'm just doing the setup here. So but before I ask for the motion, was there anything from leadership before we close? No. Okay, great. So colleagues, do we have a motion? We have a motion from Commissioner Trees, a second from Commissioner Phi, all those in favor of moving to the executive session. Thank you. Any opposed, the motion carries unanimously five to zero. So we'll give everyone the op-